Our six o'clock meeting for December the 11th, which will be a meeting to primarily swear in our new city council and have a bunch of presentations. And so first I would like to start with the roll call.
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing. I've asked Reverend George Crisp of the Christ Church by the Sea, it's the church that I attend to give our invocation tonight.
I'll lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you for the invitation and the privilege of being here to offer this prayer. Let us be in the spirit of prayer. Oh God, you have called us to a variety of tasks in our neighborhoods. You have blessed us with resources beyond compare and given us the gifts and graces to act responsibly. We thank you for this community of Newport Beach, for its citizens, its prosperity and its strength, for its commerce, its opportunities and its progress, for its institutions, its recreational choices and its variety. We ask your blessing upon our city council, for the responsible work they do in the public trust, for the high standards they set for leadership, for their ability to listen as well as to speak, for the compassion they show to the citizens of Newport Beach, for their patience in difficult decisions, for their understanding when viewpoints differ, for their hospitality offered to our seasonal visitors, and for their sense of justice for the good of the community. Tonight we offer a special prayer for Mr. Webb, our mayor, and for the way he has guided our community in celebrating its centennial year. May he know our gratitude for his tenure and our best wishes in his continued service on the council. In this time of transition, may this council see beyond the ceremony and beyond their personal reflective remarks to the work they must do to be a part of what you are blessing, from the coastline of the Balboa Peninsula to the cliffs of Corona del Mar, from the busy lanes of traffic to the tranquility of our parks. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen. Please be seated. Thank you very much Reverend Crisp. Tonight is a special night. We are having a meeting which is normally not at the, at this time, however, we have a lot of special things that are happening or have happened. And we have an election which has elected a six new council members, or six council members. We have two council members that are leaving us and so that we, this isn't going to be quite a normal meeting. We're going to have a few presentations, people are going to be saying some nice things, I hope. And, and I, I hope that this can be an event that is perhaps a little bit more fun than some of our rather long council meetings have been in the past. But before I lose control of things tonight, I have a few presentations to make. Well, Todd and I have a history. I'm going to move down here because we're going to have... The first proclamation that I have tonight and presentation is to Marie Knight. Our centennial completely wore her out and she left the city. But I've been told to tell you that the statute eliminations have passed and there's no workman's comp availability from Newport. I'm sorry. Tonight Marie is the, the person that really was, I guess you might say, the most instrumental for an entire two-year period, or three, but anyway, a long time as far as pulling our centennial program together. And many, many hours that she put in as well as the hours of her staff and many assistants is something that, that we could not have really appreciate until you actually see it up close. But I have a little bit to say here, and she's looking at me kind of glaring a little bit, and so that, Marie, are you ready?
Go for it.
Proclamations start with whereas. I may leave a few whereases out, but at any rate, whereas Marie Knight was the Director of Recreation and Senior Services Department for four years, where she led a staff of tremendous assistants, whose primary job was people, programs and fun, and also to keep Marie looking good. Whereas Marie Knight was absent from a city manager staff meeting and volunteered in absentia for the high honor and responsibility to direct the city's centennial celebration. Whereas the centennial opening event, Let's Do Lunch, was overseen by Marie Knight at the Newport Dunes in October of 2005 with over 10,000 people in attendance, where all had great time, even with Marie herding them around in her golf cart. Marie Knight successfully coordinated all of the volunteer efforts that brought the community up to Duarte to cut and glue flowers for the city's 2006 Tournament of Roses Parade float. And even though the gods misinterpreted her sundance and produced the first rain in 51 years, we won the second most prestigious trophy. Whereas a year of centennial events, including school district plays, Bill Mendley, Righteous Brothers concert, a 100th birthday party, a book, a centennial merchandising, and centennial merchandising were directed by the human dynamo, Marie, as well as two huge parties. Whereas Commander in Chief Marie Knight, standing atop her low-speed Segway, caused people to dive to the sidelines when she zoomed past, walkie-talkie in one ear, cellphone in the other, as she directed the production of the centennial closing event, 100 Years Between the Piers, the largest beach party ever held on the West Coast. We had somewhere between 20, or 30,000 to 40,000 people that attended this. And this was in October 2006. Whereas Marie Knight managed the centennial sponsorship effort raising over $800,000, while at the same time overseeing the coordination of a herd of cats known as city staff, city council members, high maintenance VIPs, bands, vendors, committees, and hundreds of community volunteers who worked for two years on the centennial. Now therefore, I, Don Webb, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby recognize the tremendous effort put forth and selflessly offered by Marie Knight, and I hereby thank and commend her for her efforts on behalf of the people of Newport Beach. My wife needs to get closer next time. The podium is going to be in the way. Wait a second Marie. We have a bouquet of flowers.
Okay, one, let's do it. Ready? Smile. She's still giving me directions. Six more boxes. It's a 1906.
Thank you Marie. Would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, and I'll be brief because I know you have a lot to do and the mayor said people are going to say nice things, so I think I'll start it out. It was a thrill and I was blessed to work with such wonderful community volunteers that I can now call my friends. We had a fantastic steering committee and people like Sandy Haskell and Dana Pettit and Ray Halouski and I know I'm going to forget some people, Gaywassle Kelly and Tom Anderson and Barry Allen, I mean, people just for two years gave us their life and I really truly appreciate all that this community did. We had wonderful volunteers, the city team, the city staff, police, fire, general services, public works, admin services. This three-year saga touched just about every department and we had tons of help. And the recreation senior services team is the most phenomenal group of people I've ever had to work with. And, you know, thank you for this recognition, but I feel as though they all need to be standing here with me because it certainly wasn't a one-person deal. It was everybody pitching in, everybody putting a lot of things on hold for a long time, and I truly appreciate that. Now that it's over, I can say that I was very blessed to have been able to be a part of this and to be a part of the city family. So I miss everybody tremendously. Thank you very much and congratulations to all of you and thank you to the council for your support during this process.
Thank you Marie. We, over the, over the last several months, we have recognized a whole lot of people that participated in the centennial so that, that I know that this was, we had to have just one single event just for Marie. Next is, is something that's really special to me, and I would like my wife to come forward. I have some flowers here, but you have to put up with a proclamation too. Over the years, I, through the family, I've done a bunch of what we call Lot Family proclamations and, but Jan has never gotten one, so I figured tonight she gets a mayoral proclamation. Are you ready? Whereas on December 13th, 2005, Jan Webb became the First Lady of the City of Newport Beach when Don Webb was selected to be mayor. And during the following year, Jan Webb has done an outstanding job of keeping the mayor apprised of where he should be, what he should do, and using her teaching skills has reviewed his correspondence and proclamations for grammar and content. Whereas Jan Webb has even tried to offer comments on attire and color coordination for the mayor's costumes, but alas, her sage advice and suggestions were ignored on most occasions and the mayor has been known to appear in public with loud and/or clashing colors along with an assortment of hats for the occasion. Whereas during the city's centennial year, Jan Webb has promoted the city's celebration by passing out hundreds of lapel pins along with invitations to attend events and has participated in every event, including many journeys to Duarte for float decoration and the final journey to Capacadena for the soggy Tournament of Roses Parade. In addition, the 100th birthday party on the front lawn of City Hall was planned and hosted by Jan Webb and her committee on September 1st, 2006, complete with birthday cakes, music and honorees. Whereas Jan Webb has been the mayor's arm, excuse me, Jan Webb has been at the mayor's arm for the, the crowning of the Rose Queen, the mayor's dinner, many business ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, dedications, the OC Marathon start as well as other races, the Christmas and 4th of July boat parades, and many more events, always trying to take pictures and make copies so that she could give them to participants. Whereas during all of these commitments of time, grandmother Jan has found time to regularly care for her four grandchildren because they are the really true joy of her life. And each one of them returns their love when they proudly say, "That's my grandma." Now therefore, I, Don Webb, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, wish to publicly express my thanks to my wife, Jan Webb, for first putting up with me in my unusual ways and for all the many hours she has spent supporting the mayor and the activities of the city as well as the love, guidance and support she has given me over the last 40 years of our marriage. In recognition of the aforesaid, I, Don Webb, do hereby proclaim that Jan Webb is granted the title of Centennial First Lady for the City of Newport Beach. Let's have the flowers.
No, I don't see it all. Cameron, see. Okay, you got it? Good.
Now we get to get serious. Mr. Nichols, can you come down please? This is Councilmember Richard Nichols' last meeting with us, and I'm going to recognize him through a proclamation as well as a couple of gifts we have down here. So let me start. Whereas, Richard A. Nichols has served as a member of the Newport Beach City Council from the sixth district for four years. And whereas Councilmember Nichols took a strong interest in transportation circulation, the city's oil and gas program and land use planning issues during his term in, on the city council. Whereas Councilmember Nichols served on several boards and committees during his time with the city, including the Newport Coast Advisory Committee, the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee, the Aviation Committee and the Oil and Gas Fields Operations Committee. Whereas Councilmember Nichols represented the city on several regional committees or commissions, including OCTA Growth Management Area Eight Committee, the Hazardous Waste Joint Powers Authority and the San Ana River Flood Protection Authority. Whereas Councilmember Nichols took an active role in planning for projects and activities in District Six and citywide, including advocating for more access to play areas for organized sports like volleyball and Little League. Whereas, as a member of the city council, Richard Nichols continued his work as an active member of the Orange County Republican Party, even becoming elected to the Orange County Republican Party Central Committee for the 70th District. Now therefore, I, Don Webb, on behalf of the city council of Newport Beach, do hereby offer its thanks to Councilmember Nichols for his four years of service to the City of Newport Beach and wish him and his wife Sandy well as he completes his four-year term of office in the city council. As a remembrance for your service, here is a plaque and another item which will keep it on your desk. Maybe keep you on top, who knows? Give it an opportunity to replay. Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway. Now it's your turn. Come on now. I'm not sure I can make it through the long version. So I'll start off.
The longer.
Okay, all right. Todd, it's been a real pleasure working with you for, you only recognize it as four years. I recognize it for a full 16 years because I was a staff member, but that's all right. You'll start off and don't hate me too bad here. Whereas, Todd W. Ridgeway has given his service to the City of Newport Beach for over 14 years in varying capacities of mayor, mayor pro temp, council member and planning commissioner. In his verbal dissertation, the term "quite candidly" has been uttered 14,377 times, enough to stretch to the moon and back if all of the "quite candidly's" were strung together in one long candid phrase. Whereas still, in honor of Councilmember Ridgeway's, Councilmember Ridgeway, whereas is officially but temporarily replaced throughout the extent of this proclamation with a "quite candidly." Quite candidly, Todd Ridgeway is hereby retiring from city service as of Monday, December 11th, even though he wanted to retire on Tuesday, the 12th, but he lost a six to one vote. Quite candidly, in addition to the obvious, the great 7:00 AM ficus tree massacre, sockless workdays and the year of the rooster hair, Todd Ridgeway's 14 years of service will be remembered for his extensive contribution to issues such as controlling the size of John Wayne Airport, revitalizing the Balboa Village and Peninsula, being part of the team that annexed Newport Coast community, being an activist for water quality as he led the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee, preparing the city's first ever local coastal program, serving on sphere issues committees, creating the Harbor Commission and Harbor Quality and Bay Element for the city's general plan and the reuse of Marina Park, City Hall planning as well as countless other issues. Quite candidly, Todd Ridgeway will also be remembered for interesting and provocative statements of these, the ones preceded by, "I probably shouldn't say this, but," were far and away the ones that were the most interesting. Now therefore, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Newport Beach, the city council of the City of Newport Beach, hereby thanks Todd Ridgeway, quite candidly or otherwise, for the time, energy, emotion, commitment and above all enthusiasm that he has put into public service for his community of Newport Beach. And thanks are also given to Todd Ridgeway's family, Kay, Kyle, Scott and Madison Ridgeway, for allowing Todd to be out of the house and off doing city business so many days and evenings for, during those 14 years. Now therefore, on behalf of the entire city council, I, Don Webb, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim this evening, Monday, December 11th, 2006, as Todd W. Ridgeway Evening, in the, in the City of Newport Beach, and that in honor of this evening, residents of the city should go sockless and celebrate it accordingly. We have several things for you too. We have the tile plaque that, that talks about, oh, wait a second, we didn't get the right picture.
Okay, here we go. Bear with me. Look friendly.
We have a tile plaque which lists the years on the council as, as you also the clock, but also I have a picture that was prepared by Scott Kennedy, who is an local artist that has done ships and marine or whatever, of Canary Village. And this picture in the bottom corner shows Todd's office, right here. And so I thought it would be nice for you to hang this in your office. Thank you Todd. That concludes my presentations for right now. There's a 500-foot radius around that office. That's right, not anymore. Well, it's still a radius, but now I can weigh in, quite candidly. Now is the time for other presentations that community leaders and public officials might like to make to whoever and whatever.
Good evenings, members of the council. My name is Emmanuel and it's my honor to represent Senator Harmon here this evening to recognize the service to our community of outgoing council members Nichols and Ridgeway. I know the senator wanted to be here this evening personally to honor these men for their service to Newport Beach. However, he is detained with his legislative duties in Sacramento. However, he wanted to make sure that I present the two outgoing council members with the state resolutions and he would like me to present them to the outgoing council members.
Okay, seeing none? Oh, got one.
John Heffernan, and I'm a resident, and I want to, it's a simple presentation because I've got a little experience on that side of the desk. I want to thank each of you, each of you that are leaving, each of you that are there, each of you that are coming in for all the time you give to the city. Because Mr. Webb, Mr. Ridgeway, just on these presentations, you know the countless thousands of hours it takes, not just on TV, but behind the scenes. You do great service for the city. It is thankless lots of times because people will argue with you and will make things large that are often small, and you have to be tolerant and polite and kind and, and seek a solution to a lot of troublesome issues. You're kind of caught in the middle of a lot of things and trying to do what's right, and that takes a lot of effort timewise, it takes a lot of concentration, a lot of wisdom. So I want to thank you, each of you, for your service to our city. We benefit from all of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Now is the time for the remarks from outgoing council members. Mr. Nichols, I'm going to let you go first.
I think I'll stand up, but I'm not sure exactly where you... Can you hear me? Turn your mic off. That helps. I'd like to thank my supporters and family to start with. Sandy's in the back here. Could you stand up, young lady? We have three kids, I should say. Kathy is the one who's been running around getting a few pictures. She's done, and she works with me and keeps me in line on my job. And Rich and Matt are two of my sons and they're just a little bit younger than she is, and, and they've done pretty well and they're around town, but I, I'm not sure whether they're here or not. Okay, do you want to wave a hand or something like that, guys? I was either a go-along-and-get-along type of person, or I was going to stand out separate, and I was elected separate, so I ended up standing separate on a lot of issues. And I, I appreciate very much the people who have helped me, particularly the Greenlight folks and Phil Arst, he was always there. I'd like to recognize Dolores Otting and Darlene Covington, who did a tremendous job on helping me on the election campaign. I think Dolores and I have had a few conversations in the past, and they've been enjoyable. And I think she gets toned down just a little bit, believe it or not, Homer, when you... So imagine what you have to look forward now. I'd like to thank my other supporters and those who've walked, and Wally Ziegler in particular is one, and it's been very, very good working with each and everyone. And it's been very, very good working with each and everyone in the city. I've been treated warmly and with respect and I think we've been able to accomplish a few things. Kept some volleyball courts at Corona del Mar and I was very proud of that. And I didn't get a couple dolphins on the hill and I was happy about that. And I think we had a very successful centennial in Corona del Mar and I think it went very smoothly and there was no acrimony among anybody and I, and I kind of helped just stay out of the way, but keep things so that everybody would be happy when we got done. And I just enjoyed working with various people that had zoning problems and that worked out pretty well and I had very good support from the staff in that. I enjoyed working with the Irvine Company and that sounds a little odd. The reason is that I was probably one of their biggest opponents early on in my career and may have stopped Fashion Island from being quite as tall as it could have been. But the, they have done a wonderful job in our community and I'm looking forward to them getting involved particularly in this conservation efforts and the, they have founded a, a group that is going to take on helping to keep the wild wild and the parks parks and, and our, and things like that so people can enjoy them and use them. And particularly they're, they're working with the Back Bay, Buck Gully and the lands that they've given over to the park department. I very much enjoyed working with Mr. Kiff. He's been a very much of a pleasure to work with and, and it's been a spirit of pretty much cooperation even though some of the times there were a little bit of differences. And I, I would like to say that I think we've made some headroads certainly in, in the airport and I'm happy with the way the dumps are being handled. I'm very pleased that we haven't lost any money in our oil fields. They've continued to produce and probably work along pretty well that way. And I think the community has progressed and become just a little bit better as you can see by the publicity we get from all over the world. We don't need to become something different. We need to be better as we are. And I thank you for helping me lend efforts in that way too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. I'm a little reluctant to give, give this over to Mr. Ridgway. He might decide to get even, but quite candidly, I think it's okay. Well, first I want to say congratulations to Dick Nichols for four years of serving this city well. And your words were spoken from your heart and very eloquent and I applaud you for Boy, eight years goes fast, guys. And I, I wasn't sure where to start and I wanted, I thought I was going to try to say something profound and eloquent and all that. And at the end of the day, I'm just thankful that you trusted me for two terms to allow me to be here and work on city issues. And I thought I'd give a historical perspective. I treat, I tried to keep the historical perspective in chronological order and quite, i- it was difficult to do. I almost said it, didn't I? I almost did. Well, so I may, I may, I may wander from, from the chronological order. The first comment I'd like to make is by seven o'clock or seven thirty, the city of Newport Beach is safe. I will no longer be in office. So, and when I was first elected and then as I continued to be elected and we were always being hammered and beat up and I'd go home at night and look at the mirror and I'd say, I can't be that bad, you know, but, you know, after a while I started to believe it and I thought, man, are we just a bunch of misfits up here and crazy guys? I mean, and then, you know, I, I was down in the Bahamas and I was down in St. John, St. Thomas and there was a bumper sticker down there and you talk about, if you've ever been there, you know that the population is people who immigrated there, they're kind of misfits and the bumper sticker said it all and I thought, maybe that's us, you know? We're all here because we're not all there. So, but sanity came back to me eventually. And here I am, I made it to the end and actually it's been fourteen years. I was six years on the planning commission and eight years here. And in the beginning, there were a number of folks up here that were gainfully employed trying to make a living. At that point in my life, I could commit my time and effort and it seems like I ended up on every commission board and I, I know you guys are tired of watching the TV screen and seeing my name up there, but, you know, Mayor Webb about a year ago, he says, Ridgway, you can't be on these. I gotta take you off. So I said, great, you know? I'm really ecstatic about that. So that was the beginning of slowing down. But let, let me start with my random notes and then some other notes and we'll go from there. One of the first jobs that we were charged with the then council was hiring a new city manager. We were with an interim manager and I had the pleasure of meeting all the candidates then. And Homer Blue Dow was selected from that group. I know we had a wonderful dinner and, and quite candidly, a couple of, or hours of discussion on, on the night that we actually offered that. And I always remember that as if it was yesterday. So it was very, very nice. The immediate, one of the immediate things at hand, let me start off and then we'll end up with this. When I ran for office, I ran on a campaign of creating a new general plan. And that was because I was meeting with Phil Arst and a number of those folks, they said we needed a new general plan. I certainly agreed with that and by law, we needed one. And I'll, and again, I'd like to visit that in a, at a, in a few moments. The issue at hand was the annexation of Newport Coast and there was a committee down there. But after hours, and I mean Homer and Dave Kiff, wherever you are, and I assume you're here, we spent numerous hours with the Irvine Company, Irvine Ranch Water District and then there was somebody who was arbitrating in between for us, actually Gary Hunt. And at the end of the day, we finally came to an agreement and that was memorialized and voted on by city council and we were able to negotiate at least my IRWD twenty-seven million dollars. That was not an easy number to come to and there were many fine points that were not easy to come to. Another thing that I ran on eight years ago was creating good water quality. I had the pleasure then of knowing and being supported by Jean Watt. Jean was committed to, everybody in this room knows to the environment, she still is, she's working on the, the Santa Ana River or Orange County River Park and it is something that is worthy and ultimately this council, I'm sure, will, will embrace it and it'll become part of our city. But as part of water quality, the city council over my first term, finally, we came between grants and, and dollars from the government and some general fund money. We are now committing about five million dollars on an annual basis toward water quality. We dedicated the Benita Canyon Sports Park. That was a, per, a, a development agreement with the Irvine Company, but we were able to get, we had to add additional funds. It seemed like a long time coming, but that park was dedicated, I think, in my first mayorship. We did renovate Balboa Village and the two piers. That was another about nine million dollars, perhaps ten million dollars, who's counting when you're spending money, you know? But the entire village has been redone and it will, it's continuing to be redone. At least we finally clicked in and the, the nautical museum is moving there and I, I think you're going to see a continued wonderful village. For those who live on the peninsula, we completed the roads. That was a forever issue. Mr. Webb at one time was, he fought, he fought and fought and fought, but you know, he finally came around. But they're done. A, a, a issue near and dear to me was the senior affordable housing. A lot of people won't understand the complexity of that, but the Irvine Company, Sharon Wood and myself continued to browbeat them and say, look, you have a, an obligation to provide affordable housing to the city. And to the, my hats off to the Irvine Company, it was not a legal obligation, but we preyed on the moral obligation and they performed. The land where the, the hundred and twenty units exist down there on, what is that?
Bayview.
But, well, Bayview Landing was donated to, to that project and that was from the Irvine Company. Mariners Library, again, couldn't have been done without, first of all, Walt Hald, I, I promised myself I wouldn't use names, but he's the one that brought to us in a, in a January and I think it was oh-four or, yeah, how long has it been? I think it was oh-four. But anyhow, we had to have a million dollars of private money to match estate money and we had to have it by June and we had to have the project designed and ready to go and take it to Sacramento. Don Webb went to Sacramento, actually there were a couple of ladies, the current chairman of the Library Commission, Teresa Chase was one of the ladies who collected and obtained that money. And the entire project was done in about two years and I can't tell you what a wonderful project that was. We started the Newport Coast Community Center as part of the ongoing obligation for the, for the annexation. A larger issue and one that we just finished here recently was the spheres issue protecting the city from expansion at John Wayne Airport. It's above and beyond the, the settlement agreement with Spahn and the airport. It is an agreement between the county and, and the city of Newport Beach that basically says they can't expand without our approval. To put it another way, we have veto rights over expansion. That's something that we worked on for four years, thousands of hours of meetings between the committees or committee and then the consultants and the, it was a much more expansive agreement in the beginning and it got pretty watered down, but at the end of the day, we ended up with what we really wanted and that was control over John Wayne. Something that I'm really proud of and soon, in a few years, you'll really understand how neat it was. When I gave a speech at the Chamber of Commerce in my first tenure as mayor, I made a comment about we wanted car dealerships and there were a couple of folks kind of roaming around up by the airport area and as luck would have it, a gentleman, Dave Wilson, calls me on the phone, he said, are you for real? I said, well, sure, what do you want? He says, well, I own the Lexus dealership out in Tustin, can I visit you? And I said, sure. He lived in Laguna, or his office was in Laguna Beach, way down south toward Dana Point. I would tell you within twenty minutes, he was in my front door holding the newspaper article. I said, Dave, how can I help you? And from then on, we worked hard at looking at every site in Newport Beach. I can tell you Mayor Agron was chasing him hard. Mayor Agron even called me and said, you know, we really want Lexus. And I said, you know, they're already up at your north border in Tustin, so, but the rest is history. Dave really put that thing together and the city here participated in that. He is on a, for his first year sales, he's at a, a volume of probably two hundred million dollars, about fifty million dollars ahead. One percent of that goes to our general fund. Actually, we have to pay back a loan to him that he loaned to us, but I, I suspect that loan will be paid off within probably six years, somewhere in there. And then we get a hundred percent of that money and we made sure all points of sale were in Newport Beach. Now, that is critical. When I started eight years ago, the urban forest was about twenty-eight thousand trees. The urban forest now exists of twenty-six, I mean thirty-six thousand trees. And that, that is the actual inventory of trees that the city owns. Open space, when we did Newport Coast, a lot of people don't realize, we picked up about five thousand acres of open space. Dave, where are you, are you in here? I want to say we picked up about another, I think fifteen or eighteen hundred acres underwater. Our coastline then, before annexation, was six point two miles. Our coastline now is eleven miles. It's an extraordinary thing and I always, and I, and I want to say, this council, our councils preceding it in this one, we always worked to what was best for the city of Newport Beach. What created a, a lifestyle here, what created the, the quality of life and everything I've just mentioned is quality of life. Let me go through, I have another list here. The settlement agreement was in two thousand and three. The then council with Spahn and AWG and ourselves negotiated with the federal government and we got an extension to the year two thousand and fifteen on the curfews and the noise and ultimately that can be extended to two thousand and twenty, but it really got trumped by the spheres agreement. The general plan approval, I started off talking about the general plan. The Greenlight people, somewhere after the general plan process started when I was first mayor in two thousand and two, it takes time to do these things, opposed it. I think they realized that, you know, it was a good thing. I want to say what happened on Measure V and the city, the participation by the citizens of this community, that first meeting, there were two meetings that day over at the hospital, probably four hundred people showed up. Ultimately, probably a hundred applied to be on the committees. Bob Shelton agreed to be the first chairman. I called him, I kind of put a strong on, on him and ultimately after a couple of years, then it went to Nancy Gardner, who the citizens of this community elected and I think rightfully so. She, she shepherded the final general plan through the process. The certification of the LCP, that was mentioned earlier. It's a document, actually the land use component of the local coastal program has been approved. Now it has to be amended because we approved the general plan. So it will just follow the dictates of that. We did annex San Ana Heights, East San Ana Heights. We're under construction on a new fire station up there. It is state of the art. We also have a training center up there. This council, I believe everybody on this council, almost everybody was involved in, in that land acquisition and the construction or the beginning of it. If you go up there now, you can see it. The water qual, quality enforcement program, we added, that's part of that five million dollars, we added code enforcement. That's one of the beautiful trailers that are out front and we're adding a couple more by the way, but I'll let this council deal with that. Disaster preparedness, Dolores, specifically for you. We focused on it and Chief Riley made that a number one priority before he retired. The Big Canyon Reservoir cover, that was another, I think, five million dollar project. We began the city hall planning process, it's been bogged down, but at the end of the day, this council will ultimately, ultimately make what I think is a, a decision that will be a benefit to the entire community and we'll all be proud. God knows that we need it and if you've been around here and when we add more trailers and you walk through city hall, you know, tomorrow wasn't soon enough. The Morning Canyon Slope Stabilization Project, Marina Park Planning Process, that was begun and at this point in time, in my mind, it's, it's pretty well done. We have, we have at least negotiated with Protect Our Parks, the city, staff and the Legion Hall. There are some detractors who are actually disseminating misinformation, but that is a beautiful project, certainly for the Legion Hall and it is a good project for the city. Ultimately- Ultimately, we'll have a park and a small marina, visitors serving marina there. Only recently, with the help of Councilmember Rozansky, we acquired Sunset Ridge Park. That thing had been languishing for all eight years while I was here and it took a final push and Councilmember Rozansky did that. Centennial year events, that gave Don Webb the opportunity to wear all his silly clothes. Now I'm going to get even. And he's still doing it. And I know Jan tried and tried and tried and she put different clothes out there to no avail, you know. So, but Don was just a great centennial mayor. We assumed PCH from Corona del Mar, in Corona del Mar in 2004, and the big Corona Beach facility improvements were started. There are a lot of things that I didn't put on here and you can just see, I started randomly going and it could go on and on and on, but I want to say, thank you, everybody, for electing me twice, trusting me. Everything I did and everything this council does, I'm satisfied, is for the betterment of the community, for the quality of life, and you haven't seen any large scale developments that everybody keeps being waved for fear that something's going to happen. That's not going to happen. The councils, the previous councils, this council, our boards and commissions, which are a fabric of this community, and we, as a council, couldn't function without them, have done nothing but create a quality of life. One thing I guess I would like to mention, I don't want to, we created a harbor element as part of our general plan. It's the only one in the United States. We started from scratch, we being the current harbor commissioners and there was a harbor committee. We used to meet at 6:00 in the morning here or over at the pier. And at the end of the day, we created a cutting edge harbor element and we created a harbor commission to protect the very heart of this community. I meant the thank yous, I think Mr. Nichols said it. The Irvine Company has been a great steward of quality and responsibility to this community. Love them or hate them, and there are times I've done both, trust me. But at the end of the day, they have created a gorgeous community, certainly on that side of the bay. This is the older side, the 1906 side, as Don Webb would like to say, but they have, they have been a wonderful steward and what they have done in the Newport Coast area and the open space is remarkable. You know, staff, I tried never to confront staff because they could stonewall me, you know, but, and that occasionally happened, but at the end of the day, again, they were the best. This is the organization here, and I've worked in a lot of cities, as most of you know, I'm a developer and I probably worked in 50 different jurisdictions. We have a few issues to resolve at planning and building regarding coordination and that type of thing and this council's going to take care of that, they promised me in closed session. But, yeah, you did. Ed did. Ed did.
You're not supposed to disclose what goes on in closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But anyhow, staff here at all levels, and I mean at all levels, for you, for those of you who have worked with them know that they are the best and they are very helpful and the attitude here changed when Homer came aboard, it's not, "What do you want?", the attitude now is, "What can we do for you?" And hopefully, that was an attitude that I tried to pass on. I will say, there were a couple of times or down times where I was cranky. I'm just human, but as I'm, the last six months, I found myself wanting to help everybody and be involved in everything I can. The boards and commissions goes without saying and last and obviously not least, is my own family. My 14-year-old was, became sick this year severely and he's well now, but he's at a basketball game because his whole life has revolved around basketball and that's where my wife is. She will be with me later. I'm sorry I can't introduce you to them, but to me, it was more important to make sure that he participated in what he loves most because God tried to take it away from us and he didn't. So, he's at basketball with my other kids and I want to thank them for all the patience and giving to me that they have given through the years, for allowing me to be here to give to you, and my wife especially. And I love her and I love all of you and thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you, Todd and Dick, for your wonderful remarks. A city clerk's asked me to make a brief announcement. We have on December 11th, Thursday at 10:00 a.m., a toy drive at City Hall for families of our military. It's for the Christmas operation for our troops. There'll be a special appearance from Santa Claus and so that if you show up in the front of City Hall, there even might be, is it a Humvee or a, a Humvee and a fire truck are going to be on display. So, December 11th, or 14th, which is this Thursday at 10 o'clock. The next item on our agenda is a reorganization and it's, the first item is the certification of the municipal election results. Do I have a motion?
I move that we certify the results of the election.
Second.
Can we adopt resolution number?
2006-103.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to comment on this? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
That's your last vote.
Boy. You know, my last vote at the sanitation district was a vote for a $28 million capital improvement project. That felt good.
Well, now, I think the city clerk would like to have those that were elected in this last election to please gather down at the table to accept the oath of office. So, Steve, hold down the fort.
Hold down the fort.
Lonely at the top.
I state your name.
Don I. O. D. Curry.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And the laws and the charter of the city of Newport Beach.
And the laws and charter of the city of Newport Beach.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
the election of mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Webb. This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. For clarification purposes, nominations do not require a second, they are debatable and cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations requires a second, is not debatable or reconsiderable and requires a two-thirds vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot and the results read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done using the electronic voting equipment. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
In light of Councilmember Rozansky's, Mayor Pro Tem Rozansky's outstanding service for the last year, I'd like to nominate him for mayor.
Are there any other nominations?
Move that nominations be closed?
Second.
Please vote. Nominations are closed.
You're in charge now.
Okay.
Take over.
I'll take your agenda. Okay, moving right along, I will turn, oh, the mayor presides over this, great. My first official act is mayor. I get to preside over the election of the mayor pro tem. And so, we will conduct oral nominations. Are there instructions you'd like to read, Madam Clerk?
Same instructions for mayor pro tem as for mayor. So we will now open nominations for the position of mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Ed Selich. He has spent 10 years on the planning commission before his term with the city and has done, I think, an exceptional job of keeping on top of city issues and I don't know of anybody that does more complete homework than he does and I would like to nominate him.
Do we have a second?
You don't need one by second.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate. Nominations be closed?
Second?
Second. I thought you seconded it. All in favor?
Motion carries.
Hey, Don, you didn't give me the keys to the city. I.
I'm sorry about that. It's a secret.
The beer bottle opener? Oh, yeah, that's right, I forgot. Well, we, if you haven't noticed what people are doing, they're jockeying for position up here and it is done on the basis of seniority and so, since our former mayor, Don Webb, who has the most seniority, has already picked his seat and Councilman Selich, by tradition, sits next to the mayor as the mayor pro tem and I believe that next in seniority is Councilwoman Daigle.
And I like it right here.
She likes it right there. She likes the view, so I think going down the pecking order is Councilman Curry, likes his view, and then I believe it's the next, the highest vote getter, is that what it is in the election?
That's up to us.
Well, Nancy, how do you like it down there? Mike?
I definitely would like this seat.
You like that seat? Now, but, you know, with that seat goes, most people here may not know, is a weighty duty, he is the keeper of the lights for our PowerPoint president. Would you demonstrate that quickly, just quickly? Let's see your technique. Oh, you got the wrong lights off, come on now. Those two, that's it. Ah, there we go, okay. So, we all know our place. Okay, senior arrangements are done, we'll go on to item number six, presentation, I think that's over here. I have the honor of presenting a gavel to our outgoing mayor, or former mayor Webb, if I can get the box open. What it is, just take it out of the plastic. It's an official mayor's gavel and it says, "For Don Webb, Centennial Mayor, 2005-2006." You can have the box too, Don.
Thank you.
Okay, Don, and if you'd like to make some outgoing remarks as our former mayor?
I'll try to keep it brief.
Please, please do.
I think we all will start off with thank yous. I've already introduced my wife, Jan, she's very important to everything that happens in our household, including all the things I mentioned earlier. But my two sons are here, Don and Cameron, and in the audience, stick your hands up. They've really made us happy by, between the two of them producing four grandchildren and that's really the loves of our lives too. Our friends Martha and Jack McClarty, Joyce Denning and Alan, Jean Olson are also in the audience and they've given a tremendous amount of support to us over the years. Of course, my campaign organization was rather small this year. It was me and my treasurer, Ray Zartler, he did a wonderful job in helping me get through this campaign and with a timely filing of things with Levon, so thank you, Ray. The city council, I just can't thank them enough for allowing me to be the mayor this year because this was really a fun year to be mayor. The city staff has done a tremendous job in making sure our city runs well, led by Homer and Sharon and Dave Kiff, legally advised by Robin Claussen and Levon is our city clerk, Dave Kiff in the background there is always helping out. But this team is just an unbelievable team. Of course, I've worked with them and seen them change since 1968, when I first started with the city, and I think that we have as good a group of people here today as we've ever had and I think that the attitude that they have of supporting the citizens of Newport is great. I applaud them and we're going to make it even better. Citizens of Newport who put the trust in us up here at the city council by electing us, I'd like to thank them. I appreciate the opportunity to serve a second term and as the others up here also appreciate that opportunity too. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that your trust was well-founded in us. You'll be pleased to hear that I'm fresh out of centennial moments, but I must say that I could not have had a better year to serve as mayor. History of Newport is a hobby and it has been rewarding for me to be able to share that with all of you over the years. We've had the two really terrific parties to begin and end the centennial celebration. We just couldn't have, I think, celebrated it any better. On the serious side, Todd has already mentioned every project that's ever been known to mankind and I was there too. So I won't go through those, but they include, I'd like to take a little bit of credit for the library in that I was elected and made my first in a position as a city council member, even though I was not sworn in yet, I went to Sacramento and testified and I think I had a little bit to do with getting some of the money for the grant for the library and that was in 2002. We adopted Ensenada as a sister city this year and in conjunction with the NOSA's Newport to Ensenada race, this is something that hasn't been mentioned. Todd takes, has already described Lexus. Greenlight 2 was defeated resoundingly, which means to me that with the passage of the general plan update, that our city council needs to continue to involve the public and with its future decisions and need to follow the plan that the voters have supported. So I, I am going to make every effort to make sure that that gets done. With our new city council, we have a broad range of people with varying qualifications and I'm looking forward to working with all of them on things like the new city hall, more active parks, conforming the zoning code to the new general plan and resolving mooring issues, as well as continuing to approve new. mooring issues, as well as continuing to approve Newport. Good luck to you, Dick, wherever you are, and your future ventures. And Todd, in spite of all the kidding around, we're going to miss your experience and contacts. Thank you, thank you for the fourteen years of service, and I hope I can live up to your role as the senior member of the council. Mayor Rozansky and Mayor Pro Tem Selich, congratulations on your two new positions, and I'm here to help. Leslie and Keith, congratulations on your election, and our appointment has now been confirmed. Nancy and Mike, welcome aboard. It's going to be great to work with you. Quite candidly, I have had a wonderful year as mayor and can't imagine how it could be, could have been any better. And no, I don't want a second term, mainly because other members of this council need to have that opportunity. Thank you.[657.51][657.51](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Don. Could we have had a better centennial mayor? Really?[671.73][671.73](LAUGHTER).[672.73][672.73](APPLAUSE). Now, I get my little opportunity here to say a few words, and I'm going to try and be brief, because I know we all want to get where we're going after we leave here. But, first of all, I'd like to thank, first of all, well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming here tonight and sharing this occasion with us. It's a big night for me, certainly, as well as all my co-council members. I'd also like to thank my council colleagues for having the confidence in me for electing me mayor, and I hope to serve them well, as well as the public. I think we have a unique opportunity in town now with the approval of our general plan, so our blueprint for the next twenty-five years, and I think it's going to be a valuable tool, not only to protect the existing quality of life that we have in town, but to enhance the quality of life. And so, I look forward to using that tool to all of our benefit. And I hope that when we look back on a year from now, when I'm hopefully, well, maybe not hopefully, but passing the gavel along to someone else up here, that we are known for the quality of our deliberation over the past year, because I think that's important. As far as the important work that we have ahead of us, we have passed the new general plan, but that's only part of the deal. Now, we have to go and work on the implementation of the general plan and revisions of our zoning code. That's going to take a lot of time and effort on the council's part, and more so on our staff's part, as well as the implementation of our local coastal plan, which will hopefully snatch away some of the power that the Coastal Commission has over our city and bring it back home where it should, where it should be. Last year, we had set up a capital improvement finance committee to look at some of the capital needs in our city for the next thirty, forty, fifty years, and we identified many needs. New fire stations need to be built, new police station, Oasis Senior Center, we're already starting the plans now for that. We have parks, Sunset Ridge Park, which Todd pointed out earlier that I've been involved with, but other parks like Marina Park are getting ready to happen, and Newport Center Park as well. So, we need to work on prioritizing our needs, identifying funding, and commencing implementation of all these worthwhile projects. And, believe me, that'll take a big effort as well. We're talking about $150 million in capital improvement projects over the next fifteen or twenty years, possibly. And yes, Dolores, we'll do our best to finance it out of our own revenues. We need to begin negotiations with the county. As Todd also pointed out earlier, we just concluded our sphere issues agreement with the county, which gives us a little bit more control over expansion at the airport. But our settlement agreement will be expiring, or partly expiring in 2015 and partly a little bit later. We need to start laying the groundwork now for extending that agreement and protecting us from further growth at the airport. We need to resolve the issues to where we're going to build city hall. You know, we, about a year ago, we started looking for new locations. We thought we had settled on this site, and then we started looking around town, and there's a lot of talk centering around Newport Center. But we still really don't have a concrete location. And my goal this year, and I hope the goal of the rest of the council, is to identify that location and begin the hard work of constructing a new city hall, because this we have, this facility has reached the end of its useful life, and we need to move on. We need to resolve some issues with regard to traffic in town. You know, I think if you go to most towns, the traffic's a lot, really, a lot worse than it is here. I think sometimes it's overplayed. But there are things that we can do as far as signalization and widening some streets and creating more turnpockets, whatever it takes, and we need to, we need to really look at that hard. And last but not least, something that I've been working on, or actually, the whole council has been working on, but we're going to get a lot more active next year, is looking at group homes and so reviving facilities in town, seeing how we can regulate those a little bit better to make sure that they are compatible with our, rest of our community. So, with that, I will again say thank you all. I'll invite you all to the canary afterwards. We're going to have a little celebration. Actually, Todd signaling me. I meant to do this at first, but I forgot, as I would expect. I do have some family here that I should point out.[957.73][957.73](LAUGHTER). My first, my first screw-up as mayor, but small one, easily fixed. I have my wife here in the front row with my son.[966.69][966.69](APPLAUSE). Gina and Jonathan. My sisters here, Robin and my brother Joel. I don't think we all three have been together in something like in suits and ties in a long time, so I'm thankful that they're here with their spouses. Who else is here?[986.43][986.43](APPLAUSE). I have my mother-in-law, and her friend Art is here. Also, I'm going to tip my hat to the, probably the last two or three rows, all my good friends from Troop Ninety, my Boy Scout Troop Ninety, where I'm an assistant scoutmaster. Probably never would have made it to city council without them.[1006.01][1006.01](APPLAUSE). I see some community people here. I see two former mayors, Mayor Bromberg and Mayor DeBae.
What?
Oh, Danny O'Neil, sorry.
And Dennis O'Neil.
See, I knew I was going to mess up. Evelyn, oh, I didn't see Evelyn. You must have snuck in, Evelyn. And John Heffernan was here earlier, and I thank them all for coming. We have the police chief, the fire chief. I think he left, he had another obligation. I know I'm going to miss a few people, but I do truly thank you all for coming. Oh, my niece Madison, there you go.[1041.25][1041.25](APPLAUSE). A lot of community activists.
Fire chief's out in the lobby. He didn't sneak in.
Oh, he didn't see, oh, yeah, there's his shiny head. You know, I've noticed one thing about the firemen now. We have a new police, a new fire chief. He shaves his head. I'm seeing more and more of our firemen with shaved heads. I think it's a trend now. And also, Marion Bergerson is here tonight. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for coming.[1065.47][1065.47](APPLAUSE). It's going to be a great year. Thank you.[1072.92][1072.92](APPLAUSE). And now, we'll run out of time, guys. I know I took probably more time than I thought, but if anybody else would like to make a few remarks, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll be brief. I want to get over to the canary.
Ed's buying, by the way.
Absolutely. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for showing their confidence in me and electing me mayor pro tem. I promise that I will do my best to uphold that confidence in the coming year. Also, I'd like to thank those that supported me and voted for me in the election, and validating the previous city council's appointment to me to the city council. It feels good to not have that appointed in front of my name now, so I'm real happy about that. And I'd like to thank all those that supported me during the campaign by walking the neighborhoods, displaying my signs. I know there are a lot of them around town, asking their friends and neighbors to vote for me, handing out campaign brochures. I really do appreciate all that work. As I look out in the audience here, I just see so many friends and supporters here, Steve Bromberg and Bernie Spalsted and Debbie Allen and Bob Hawkins. I mean, just too many to name, but I really thank all of you for your support and your hard work for me and in my campaign. I'd also like to thank the groups and organizations that endorsed my candidacy. They worked hard to help get my name out there and get my message out to the community, so I really do appreciate that. I'd also like to thank my opponent, Bob Schoonmaker. He ran a clean and energetic campaign, and also all the other people that participated in the campaign. We had something like twenty-six candidate forums and interviews, I think, in sixty days. That's about one every other day. And so, we kind of got to get, got to know each other and a little bit better than we had before, perhaps, and a lot of good issues were brought out during those discussions, and I think they were healthy and energetic. And most of all, I'd like to thank my campaign committee. It was small, but dynamite committee, Dennis O'Neil, Jan DeBae, and Larry Tucker. They gave me a lot of support and help during the campaign. So, I said it was a small committee, but, you know, how could you go wrong when two-thirds of your campaign committee is former mayors? So, thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. I'd like to thank Ray Zartler for his work as being my treasurer, keeping me out of trouble there. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. And I look forward to the next two years and working with our new city council. We have a lot to do, and I believe that we will have the best city council we've had for many years. The backgrounds and the experiences each of us brings, I think, provides us a unique balance of perspectives. And the chemistry, I feel, with the council members up here is one that I believe we'll be able to reach a consensus on the important issues we'll be facing in the coming years. Our qualifications and personalities are such that I have referred to this as the dream team of city councils. I mean, it's, I think it's going to be great. It's up to us to live up to that lofty title, and I think it's an opportunity that we need to seize and not squander. And I'm energized to be able to work with the ladies and gentlemen up here on the dais, and I'm truly looking forward to the next two years. Thank you. Well, one more thing, I forgot, my family, too.[1285.23][1285.23](LAUGHTER). My daughter and her new husband of eight weeks, Gabe, in the front row here.[1291.01][1291.01](APPLAUSE). And the rest of my family couldn't be here because we changed the meeting night, and they went and made other commitments, so (LAUGHTER), that's it. Thank you.[1303.73][1303.73](APPLAUSE).
Councilwoman Daigle?
Fellow citizens here in the city council chambers and those watching at home on television, I am humbled and privileged to serve this great city, and I am grateful for the confidence that you have placed in me, having served in your planning commission, having been appointed to your city council, and now electing me to this office. This past year, we celebrated our centennial. We look back at our first one hundred years, and now we move into the future with our next hundred years. And we do so with a comprehensive plan that reflects our heritage as a residential beach community, a plan that provides new approaches to managing traffic and improving water quality and maintaining parks and facilities in good order. This plan is a citizen-driven plan and a citizen-approved plan. Voters demonstrated their support of this plan in our last election. It is a time-honored plan that's not easily changed, and the city council will build credibility by putting this plan in place. I pledge to act in the furtherance of this plan and for the city to report our progress to our residents. Cities are complex, and we need partnerships within our city, community organizations, environmental organizations, the business community, neighborhoods, and families. And we have an extensive infrastructure of organizations in our community. Many of the services that we provide, we do so in conjunction with outside entities. Our sanitation needs, we receive our transportation funding, disposal of our solid waste goes to other cities. This morning, I was at an event. They had Sheriff Corona and the CHP in local cities, and they're announcing the completion of the enhanced 911 network, where local cities will now be local dispatch centers, and where another enhancement is, when your child places a call, they will have the location of the, of the call at that time. Our city sits at a crossroads. All of our pipes, all of our roads, all of our communication systems, and our watershed are connected to other entities. So, we need to work together with other partners on the management of our watershed, work together with others to manage traffic flow. For these issues solely do not concern us, and we must look for mutual interests that can unite us with others. We need partnerships with the state and federal government to control the noise at John Wayne Airport and to control the growth. We need partnerships for funding of our schools, and I commit to strengthen those partnerships at the local, state, and federal level, so that our community is safe, prosperous, and healthy. During the election process, I walked our neighborhoods and villages. Many of our residents opened their doors to me, and I found that you have such hope and such pride, and you are so hardworking and so committed. And this is great to see. I've seen it living here, I've seen it working here, I've seen it serving on our commission, and now on our council, to see the work ethic, the pride, and the commitment. And as your elected representative, my door is open to you, and I look forward to continuing the process of meeting you and obtaining your input. I want to thank everyone who is part of the election process, who ran in races, who walked neighborhoods, who held forums. And I certainly want to thank all of my supporters and everyone who participated in this process. We had a record number of candidates, and in our general plan, we had committees, we had workshops, we had surveys. There was great ideas and great passion, and all of this is for the betterment of our community. In closing, I want to thank you for the privilege of representing you, and I commit to work for the betterment of our families and children, our seniors, and the businesses of our community. And I do have some family here. My brother's here, and my mom, some other family did come out from Cape Cod where I grew up. However, I had the wrong night, so (LAUGHTER). So, anyway, they're here in spirit, and I thank all of you again for, for your confidence in me.[1589.42][1589.42](APPLAUSE).
Councilman Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Get used to it. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the contributions of councilmembers Todd Ridgeway and Dick Nichols. Todd has been a friend and a mentor who has left a legacy of leadership to our city. He was a consistent advocate for improving the peninsula and has been central to many of the great accomplishments of our community, including the annexation of the Newport Coast and the improvement of our water quality. Todd's leadership and contribution will be sorely missed. And Dick Nichols has been a cordial, honest, and hard-working colleague with whom I have been able to work closely on issues impacting both of our districts. Dick has always sought to find the best solution for the residents, and I wish him and Sandy well as he moves on from the city. And Don, it's been said before, but you are, in fact, the perfect centennial mayor, and what great leadership you provided to this city at this critical junction in our history. For that, you should be eternally proud, as we are of you.
Thank you.
In any campaign, there are many people to thank, and let me begin by thanking my wife Pamela and daughter Julia, who are here with us today.[1663.08][1663.08](APPLAUSE). Pam and Julie were tireless campaigners who walked with me throughout our city and without whom I would not be sitting before you tonight. A campaign is a tremendously humbling experience because people entrust you with their dreams for the city and lend their name to your efforts to get elected. Beginning with the political leaders, such as former Governor George Dugmagen, Congressman John Campbell, Senators Tom Harmon and Tom McClintock, Marion Bergerson, Assembly Members Chuck DeVore and Van Fran, Supervisors John Morlock, Jim Silva, Tom Wilson, Bill Campbell, and Pat Bates, and Mayor Zevlyn Hart, Clarence Turner, Dennis O'Neil, Jan DeBae, Tom Edwards, Gary Adams, Todd Ridgeway, Don Webb, and Steve Rozansky, who risked their political capital and credibility to endorse my campaign, I am honored by your support. More than two hundred people contributed to my campaign and volunteered to walk, put up signs, talk to their friends, host an event, sign a letter, and do the many little things that make a successful campaign. I will always remember you, and I'm so appreciative of all of your efforts. I particularly want to thank our firemen, police, and lifeguards, not only for your support to my campaign, but for the courage and leadership you displayed in pointing out the damage to the fiscal stability of our community that was threatened by Measure X. The community responded to your message, and I thank you for your efforts. And this election is no other. The Chamber of Commerce was key in providing a vision of strong, vibrant business community and in supporting our new general plan as a blueprint for protecting what is best about our community, and I appreciate your support. And I have come to appreciate our city manager and our city staff, who day in and day out do a tremendous job in serving the residents of our city and in helping to make our community a better place to live. Last week, I was with my friend Kurt Pringle at the swearing-in of the Anaheim City Council. Kurt observed that people run for public office for one of two reasons. They either want to be something or to do something. I am proud to serve with six other individuals who are committed to doing something to make our city an even better place to live and work. Our new general plan sets forth a framework and goals for our community. These goals... These goals include cleaning our water, synchronizing our traffic signals and improving traffic, preserving the neighborhood character of each of our distinct villages, reducing the impact of the airport, ensuring the very highest level of public safety services, providing for the library, recreation, senior citizen, and cultural facilities that are vital to a vibrant community, enhancing our property values, and protecting the quality of life that every resident of Newport Beach desires, expects, and deserves. I believe 2007 will be a year of great accomplishment. We will open the Newport Coast Community Center, the Back Bay Science Center, and the St. Anaheim Fire Station. We will decide on a location for City Hall. We will begin the process to provide internet access to every resident and visitor citywide. We will move forward to provide a new Oasis Senior Center capable of meeting the needs of the next three generations of seniors with new programs and services. We will commence new parks at Sunset Ridge and Newport Center. We will improve the speed, efficiency, courtesy, and transparency of public services. We will address some of the most affecting issues facing our neighborhoods, including the concentration of group homes and lack of adequate parking. We will protect the character, charm, and vitality of our city, recognizing that to stand still is to stagnate. We will be second to none in our public safety services and our emergency preparedness, and we will restore trust in the city government. The professional naysayers who find fault in every issue, complaint instead of praise, contempt instead of compassion, and worry in place of optimism, will be shown to be wrong. I welcome the opportunity to join my distinguished colleagues in bringing our city together to address these exciting challenges. Thank you, and may God bless our city.[1241.23][1241.23][applause]
Councilwoman Gardner. Am I the first to say that?
I think so.
Good.
I see how we fill the council chambers. If we don't have a controversial issue, we have a party afterwards.[1261.14][1261.14][laughter] Pretty good. I'd like to introduce my husband, Jim Switzer. Take a good look. It's probably the only chance you'll have to see him, since he doesn't share my enthusiasm for city government.[1271.11][1271.11][applause] Our campaign was pretty much a helping hands at home. We did a lot of stuff ourself, and I just want to thank everybody who was on it, Dennis Baker, Jan DeBay, Ray Zartler, Ray Holowski, Deborah Allen, Nancy Skinner, Bob Shelton. And I'd also like to thank an unsung hero in all this. I got a lot of credit for the general plan, and since I was running for office, I cheerfully took it, but my co-chair, Phil Lugar, deserves a lot of credit for his active stewardship.[1314.14][1314.14][applause]
Very good, Nancy. Very good.[1323.85][1323.85][applause] Caught me off guard there. I was waiting for another five minutes of Nancy.[1330.85][1330.85][laughter] Okay, Mike, don't spoil it.[1333.01][1333.01][laughter]
One of the great advantages of going last is that I get to cut down my speech with every speech that was given prior to me, so I won't take too much time. I am filled with gratitude and thanks, though. Thanks to the citizens of Newport Beach who placed their trust in me. It's just a tremendous responsibility and one that I plan to fulfill to the best of my ability every day. Thanks go to my family, not the least of which, my wife, Lynn, without whose patience and understanding, I most certainly would not be sitting here. And each and every other member of my family, including my daughters Kirsten and Emily and Lindsay, their husbands, Jeff and Jim, and my four-year-old grandson, Andrew, every single one of which walked precincts with me and rang doorbells to help win this campaign. I'd also like to thank friends that helped so much, John Moore and Kelly Speck, and Mike and Karen McNamara, Dennis O'Neil, who gave me such good advice in council along the way. I'd particularly like to thank the organizations that endorsed me and the individuals that did. Thank you, Keith, for naming almost all of them.[1428.64][1428.64][laughter] So I won't do that again. I'd like to thank Todd Ridgway especially for his service to this community, which has been tireless and long and dedicated. You set such a high bar for me in the first district, and I'll do my best to live up to it. I won't speak as lengthily from the podium as you do, but I will try to live up to your legacy of dedication, tireless dedication to the betterment of our city. In summary, I think the voters of Newport Beach spoke with uncommon clarity as a group in this last election, with the way they voted on the three primary issues on the ballot, the general plan, Measure X, and Measure W, and with the way they voted to seat the people that are on this council. We voted for a general plan that I believe is a fabulous document and a wonderful blueprint for the future of our city. I most certainly pledge to everyone here and to all of the voters to be faithful to that document, to execute it, and to bring it to life for the betterment of us all. I also would like to thank, I forgot, one group that I really need to thank, and that is my fellow members of the Planning Commission. It was a great group of guys who are very dedicated, who taught me so much about the city and helped me learn and to be able to run a good campaign. Lastly, I am honored and humbled to be sitting up here, and I pledge to everyone to be objective and honest with my views and appraisals of all the issues that will pass before us, to listen to the citizens, and to be sure to follow the mandate of our citizens where that is a clear mandate. And so for all of that, I look especially forward to serving with my fellow council members, all of whom know so much more than I do, and that can teach me so much as we go forward, and I look forward to those instructions on a regular basis. Thank you.[1585.35][1585.35][applause]
Okay. At this point in time, we move to our public comments section of the meeting. We're almost done, folks, so hang in there for just another minute or two.
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anybody want to come down and make a public comment? Dolores. How did I know?
Yes, hi. My name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I want to congratulate everyone and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah. And I just want to say how much I'm going to miss you, Todd. I've been coming to the meetings for a long, long time, and you've been there either on the Planning Commission or the City Council, and it's not going to be the same without you, and I want to applaud everything that you've done for us.[1642.53][1642.53][applause] Eight years is a long time, and you've done a phenomenal job, and even though we haven't always agreed, we've always had humor, and I sincerely appreciate your humor, and it's not going to be the same without you. And I want to thank Dick Nichols, too, for all the dedication and time that he put into what he did in his family and everyone's family, and I just want to thank all of you. Good night.
Bernie Smallstead. Want to remind ex-mayor Webb, the centennial isn't quite finished.[1684.14][1684.14][laughter] We have a McFadden Legacy Project for the centennial celebration. We have about $200,000 raised toward a $500,000 commitment to the City Council and to this new City Council. I want all you on television, all you in the audience that haven't purchased your minimum at least $250 to put your legacy in McFadden Square on granite. I want you to do that tomorrow or the next day, so we want to make this come through real fast, real quick, and so I want to remember, it's not over. The centennial isn't quite over, so just remember that. Donate soon and much and fast and quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.[1736.23][1736.23][applause] It actually is a very worthwhile project, and it will commemorate our 100-year centennial down at McFadden Square. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, with that, public comments section is closed. Before we leave, gentlemen and ladies, we are probably going to take a couple of pictures, so please don't rush out. Once again, everybody is invited to the cannery. After, we'll be there shortly. We just have to take a couple of quick pictures. Oh, upstairs at the cannery, yeah. Don't run into the restaurant. They might get a little excited. But upstairs at the cannery, we're going to have hors d'oeuvres and whatever else. Last but not least, I hope to see you all back here tomorrow night at 7:00 for our regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you.[1780.76][1780.76][applause][1781.76][1781.76][end of transcript]